Mr. Benny.
Here.
Mr. Shear.
Here.
Mrs. Brown-Barnum.
Here.
Mr. Delrose.
Here.
Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Damon.
Here.
Mr. Harvey. Mrs. Carradine.
Stand and pledge allegiance. Okay, I have two superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will begin with our superintendent's awards.
Cox Dunahay, Mr. Burdo. This time, I'd like to recognize the students from Cox Dunahay who received the superintendent's award for the third nine weeks. Before we hand out the awards, if we could just ask the parents or guardians, when the students exit the stage, they will go to the back corner. If you could just respectfully wait until all schools are done and make sure you see one of the adults before taking your kids, it just makes things run a little bit smoother. From kindergarten, Tristan Craven. Jaden Dillinger. Mason Gresh. Aleah Kelly. Hunter Pelahack. Abigail Rice. Madison Zuch. And Cody Thomas. First grade, David Syrup. Cassidy Sentles. And Megan Velasquez. We had two first grade students not with us this evening, Rhiannon Givens and Donovan Wimmer. Second grade, Colby Brady. Xander Martin. Jaylen Hodge. Ethan Olefsko. Elise Keeter. And Emily Wolf.
Next, Central Elementary.
Grade three students from Central Elementary, Nicole Brown. Ryan Dubus. Tyler Duda. Aleah Herobick. Carmel Kolar. Logan Kropowski. Elise Raymond. Grade four students, Thomas Baker. Shaylin Gordon. Nicholas Collins, who is not present. Taya Close. Laura Domer. Rhiannon Hope. Lakota Smith-Norko. Grade five students, Hannah DeWitt. Rachel Donella. Rihanna Hackett, who is not present this evening. Mackenzie Kelly. And Christina Wingar. And Montana Yansko, who is not present this evening.
Just to let you know, folks, that the gifts are being presented by Mrs. Barquere, PEA. Next, Middle School, Mr. Messer.
Sixth grade recipient of the superintendent's award this month is Evan Olefsko. Seventh grade, Ashley Schrecking-Goss. Eighth grade, Allison Grant.
Next, High School, Mr. Delrose.
Good evening. The Brownsville High School third nine weeks superintendent recipients are Senior Jade Morrissey. Junior Julie Sealy. Sophomore Jeffrey Sheward. Freshman Cheyenne Wasco. The Brownsville High School Fall Athletes' Awards for Baseball, Tyler Spahn. Fall, uh, Spring Athlete for Softball, Miranda Arison. Spring Track, Brandon Merida. Spring Track, Alexandria Woods. Spring Tennis, Nick Calvaresi.
Thank you, congratulations. We have a few more announcements. If you folks can stay just a couple of minutes, this is some very positive information about our students. I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Bellback. She has been elected as the Educator of the Year for Fayette County, the sponsors Fayette Chamber of Commerce. So, Ms. Bellback, would you please stand? She's quite active with our students and is constantly working to improve our standards and the students' standards. So, Ms. Bellback, would you like to say a couple of words?
Um, I just wanted to take a few moments to thank Dr. Savini for making this recommendation on my behalf and to thank, of course, the board and everyone at Brownsville Area School District for their support. Of course, my principal and my boss, Mr. Justin Delrose. I've been so humbled and so appreciative and so, um, I'm getting a little choked up, but so humbled for this recommendation. But truly, um, this is just an honor and just, um, something that, you know, this, this job is just something that I do every day and I come here every day and I feel so grateful for this job. I come here just on behalf of my students and behalf of you and behalf of, of, of my students every day and what I do is, is just part of me. So, this district has become a family to me, my students have become a family to me, and I love what I do. So, thank you so much for this, for this honor, but it's really just, uh, this district has become a piece of me. So, thank you and I hope that I work harder every day and I, I, I love to be here for many, many years to come. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellback, congratulations. Also, congratulations goes to Mrs. Gulich in her video production class. They were in a national competition of Robert Morris and have placed first in their competition. So, again, this is national recognition from Brownsville Area School District and our students. So, congratulations to her. Also, we'd like to congratulate Mr. McManus in the entrepreneurship program. We have been recognized by the U.S. Commerce Association for the third time in a row for their competitions and development of the Entrepreneur Center and the in-house competition program here at Brownsville High School. To be honored with this recognition for the third time in a row, only 1% of the competitors receive this award nationally. So, this is three nationally recognized programs coming out of Brownsville Area School District this year. So, congratulations to those students and Mr. McManus. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Rodbuck and the high school baseball team for co-champs of Section Two this year. They did make the playoffs and however, unfortunately, put up a good battle but lost in yesterday's game. Also, congratulations to Mrs. Block, Mrs. Gulich's girls softball team, they made the playoffs this year as well. Congratulations to our high school track team, sex, uh, under Coach Barrett. We had four students that qualified in the WPAE else today. Maricito, Brandon Merka, Nick Desplat, uh, and Ashley Patac. And I understand that Maricito is going to the States, so congratulations. As a reminder to folks that was in today's paper as well, that the Brownsville Area High, the Brownsville Area School District has scheduled an auction for May 16th at Cardell Elementary from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. There are various, um, products there, a lot of office equipment, computers, et cetera, that are available. So, that's this Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. May 6th, what did I say? I'm sorry, May 8th. I was close, I need to be quiet. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Downer. They had held an autism dinner fundraiser and from their fundraiser, they're donating a total to Cox Dunahay and Central, $4,413. Took use to autism programs. Mr. President, I turn to you, thank you.
Okay, now's your chance to bow. Okay, we're gonna continue on. Just for public record, we had exec process Monday night from 8:16 to 8:38 for personnel. 8:16 to 8:38 for personnel. Item three, public remarks on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name, nature of business, and you have three minutes. He's gonna give you the microphone.
My name is William Trubath. I am resident loser township. I am here tonight as representative of the Fayette County CTI Education Association. I would like to tell you that the Education Association has voted and I'd like to speak to item C on the agenda, consider a motion for Brownsville Area High School to go to semester about in their delivery system. And I speak for the Education Association in a vote, a majority vote, they have voiced their opposition to this delivery system. Uh, since we went through the half-day about system four years ago, our NOTD scores, which is a measurement of how successful we are in our instruction, much like your, uh, your Keystone test or something like that. We've been very successful, we're, we're well above the average for the state. Uh, our students, we have increased the number of certifications for our students threefold and, uh, we have a very successful vocational school. I have no idea why this board would like to go back to an archaic system that only one other school in the whole state of Pennsylvania subscribes to. Four or five years ago, this very board with a few exceptions demanded that we go to half-day about or they were gonna pull our students out and send them to Mont Valley Vote Tech. All of a sudden, all of those reasons that were valid four or five years ago are no longer valid. And I would, uh, I would ask this board to consider your vote as to set, uh, changing Fayette County Vote, or CTI back to a semester about system. Uh, we have a couple of students here from the CTI or Brownsville Area Students would like to speak to the board also if you would hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am a senior at Brownsville right now, I'm Marcus Crowe. I attend the Fayette CTI for advertising design and like Mr. Trumbett said yesterday, the half-a-quarter learning form, being in a half-a-quarter full-day tech, half-a-quarter full-day here at school, honestly believe it kinda messes up our credits for classes. Because you all, you all know that in the summertime, we lose a little bit of what we learn. So, let's say if we have Vote Tech at the beginning of the school year for the first semester and we need math for some of our classes, like in advertising design, we need to learn how to measure and they use calculations to determine measurement. Same with my friend Rob here, cause he's a Masonic. We will forget some of the calculations and how to add, add some of the problems or the equations that we use. Then second semester, we come back to our school and learn all over again. Therefore, while we're at school setup, now it is half-day here then half-day at Vote Tech, I think it's more valid way. And like Mr. Trumbett said, also about the NOTD scores, I believe that's also a good artifact for keeping the school at a half-a-day basis. Because me and myself with the NOTDs, I've scored above advanced on NOTDs and I'm becoming certified as a graphic artist. And I just think if you go back to the semester thing, I honestly think it's just gonna screw up with our credits and learning. Cause the classes that we have also, uh, when I was a freshman, I had freshman, I had math freshman year, sophomore year, junior year. Having credits for that, then I had to take it senior year, cause I had to catch up on my science and social studies classes. But the, uh, the half-a-quarter policy, just disagree with it. Especially for the kids that are coming after me, cause in graduating this year, the kids are coming after me, I think they'll benefit from the half-day school, half-day at Vote Tech.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Moss and I am currently enrolled at the Fayette CTI in the Masonic program. I have recently gone to Pittsburgh for the carpenter's training school and I had taken a test there. For the past three years, I have consistently had a math class every day during the scheduled time set. Without that, I do not believe that I would have been able to perform to the standard that was set by the union for my acceptance into the program. By cutting and making it a semester about, I believe that you're actually going to drastically drop the PSSA scores in any standardized benchmark test, which would be the key standard. I do believe having split day to day between the two is the best viable option for any student by receiving a education in both academics and hands-on throughout the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Nancy Rosso, I'm sure you're aware, I'm the co-op coordinator at this school. And also, you know, I want to say the two students, they have both received scholarships and I want to also say the apprenticeship. And I know, Mr. Benny, you're also in the union, it's very important they pass the test. Like Robbie said, without test, passing the test, he could not have gotten the union and the continuity with his academics helped him to do that. Also, we have received 25 new applications from Brownsville students. Now, we have 60-some students at the school. Now, those students and parents are aware that their child will be going half-day about. Now, I think it's really not fair to them and as a board, I would hope you would reconsider because I don't think that Brownsville Area School Board wants to be thought of as regressing. And you'd be the second school in the state, the second school in the state of Fayette. There's a reason they're doing half-day about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to comment, I haven't been here since you did the remodeling. I can tell you, this is a fabulous facility, congratulations, you did a super job. I'm Ed Jeffries, I work at the school also and I just wanted to share with you that I passed out some information, one letter you probably hadn't received already. The rest of the information is data and I know that the way you built this facility, you do care about the students. And I know that once you look at that information and you have it all, you'll have a better glance at what you want to vote on. We know, I, I was there when it was semester about previously. We struggled through our, our students to pass the NOTD. And the main reason was the math, science, and reading were critical. As a result, when we went to the semester, when we went to the half-day about, our schools, our scores in two years increased 26%. Now, I'll ask you, if you could receive a 26% in your PSSA test scores in, in the last, would that be good enough for you? The fact is, we know what we're doing. Please let us do our job, please help us do our job. We have students from your school, there's two represented here, there are many more that are doing a fantastic job. This is not hardball, this is not a difficult situation either. I know, you know, that you want to do the best that there is for your students. If we would have an opportunity to share with you the data that's pertinent to this, I know that it would help you make a better decision. We did not have that opportunity to share with the board members that are in attendance at our school, on our board, at the JOC. And we would like to have that opportunity, if you feel it's still necessary, after you looked at this information. But it's pretty clear cut, the one school that's doing this transports their students 90 minutes every day to school. It would be critical for them to try to go to a semester versus half-day about. So, they have to take, stay here a semester about. I'm asking you, please, take a look at that, I know you haven't made your mind up yet, but look at that and see if you could lend some thought to that young man, that young lady that's in our facility, that goes to this school, that will excel more clearly with the semester about. My closing remarks are, the last three years, I have a certificate in there, the very last page, we have received exceeding Pennsylvania standard. And I know that you want to be able to say that about your school. I know you're struggling like all schools are. We are doing what we need to do. I'm not saying we're not struggling, we're getting better every year. I just looked at the NOTD scores this year, I had nine out of 16 programs scored one. I had nine out of sixteen programs score one hundred percent. Phenomenal. It's skill, but they need math, they need science, and they need it every day. Thank you so much. Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments, and then we move on. It's, every time that we've asked for information pertaining to this before, we've got different information, and that came from the JMC. So I know we're just getting this information now, but based on what we're looking at in terms of the time, let's look at time, for example. Our students are on the bus the longest, and our students miss the most time. Not to say that our students aren't doing well, they are. And not to say that the school's not doing well, but we could be better. All of our schools could be better. But we're also looking at improving skills. Not to say that our students aren't doing well with their skills, but there's always room for improvement. The time is an issue. We're looking at a starting time for everybody to be the same, and an ending time. That's a part of it that we don't have now. In terms of scheduling, which I know some of the students have an issue with, I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. McLeod to discuss the scheduling and how that will work. Got it?
Can I just say one thing?
Real quick.
Your issues on the time. Our school buses, the two buses that take us there, Bob Scott and Eugene Greers, we are the first students at Vote Tech, and we're one of the last students to leave.
But how much time are we on the road? What we're looking at is an eight-hour day versus a half-day.
It is still four hundred ninety-five hours.
A week and, I'm not gonna debate, I'm not going to debate the numbers. We've gone through this, we can get more time in for what we're looking for. And I'm going to have Mrs. McLeod over the scheduling, so if there's issues with classes, et cetera, she can clarify.
Under the current system, we are only able to give our Vote Tech students three credits. Under the current system, we're only able to give our Vote Tech students three credits. They're only able to get a sophomore's math, English, and social studies, and then like, as Marcus said earlier, that he has to catch up as a senior. Under the new system, by going to the semester about, they'll be getting four credits of classes, where they'll be able to get all of their core content every year. So they'll be getting more academic time, and they would be able to pass the Keystone before they go to Vote Tech. So they would be completing, as soon as they complete the course, they'd be taking the Keystone, and then going to the CTI, as opposed to the current system now, where they're not getting as much instructional time. And if we have two RDLAs or such, they're losing that time, academics. With the semester about, with the semester about, that would not be the case as much. They would not be losing their academics as they would be under this current system.
What year can they take the Keystone?
Currently, we offer it for biology students in ninth grade. At tenth grade, our literature and our algebra students, those who did not pass the biology, take it in tenth grade. And any junior who has not made it that point, who's not proficient, take it in the junior year.
So students who's semester about, they would have to wait a half a year for these classes to play. Is that correct?
No. The plan is for the remediation piece of it. They will have that opportunity to take in the winter and in the springtime with the Keystone for remediation. Once we get the scores back at launch, if they did not make it, then we would provide remediation through a computer-generated program, which we discussed. That's the leader.
May I ask?
Okay, thank you.
Have you done anything with the ATD classes that a student might want to take?
I'm gonna give you one minute. We're not gonna debate this tonight. You did that Monday.
Does anybody think that a student that's away from academic education or CTI for one year is gonna come back and pick it up exactly where they left off without any kind of refreshing or anything else? Do they actually?
There is no student that comes back fully prepared, not one. Not one here at the school, not at any school, not at any CTI. There's always a remediation that has to take place. And we've talked about that before. There's also an opportunity that you can work into your schedule for remediation. Dr. Jeffries and myself and the other superintendents talked about it, where you can provide remediation or prep with a quarter, quarter credit or a half-credit in math, history, and science during that time. You will have that time. That's the academic time. You have less time now than you would in a semester. And this is nothing personal against your staff, Dr. Jeffries, or the students. It's a matter of philosophy and a matter of more time for our students to provide more classes and more credits here, as well as there. And not to say that any of our scores cannot improve, they all can. And we're proud of our students there. And I'm not done. I'm not finished. So, and we've been through this before, you've been here before, and we've discussed this. And all of a sudden, today, we get information. This information should have been brought weeks ago. This has been the case all the time. There's always new information or a change of information when we discuss it. The bottom line is that this district, at this point, feels that we will be able to provide more time for our students there with remediation there. We will be able to provide more classes here for our students under the schedule we are providing, we will be developing for next year.
Would we not ever read the scores they have Keystone?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? We're out of order now. Any other comments? Go ahead.
I've heard the comment that, you know, we haven't compared to this, we haven't studied this, we haven't looked into it. That's not true. We have been looking at this for months. We've sent our people out, we've watched, we've observed, we've brought information back, got, went out and got your information. I mean, this isn't something that we're just doing on whim at the moment here tonight. This has been going on for months. And I agree with Mr. Sabini when it comes to, you know, now we've got new information. It's always different. I think it's a crime personally, even, no matter how I look at it, when I look at students that only get four hours of school a day when they leave my house for eight hours a day. I think that's, but we will say that. I'm just gonna say that we have been looking into this, this isn't new for this school district.
Thank you, Mr. Vane. Item four, adoption of agenda-related materials for cooperation in the seminary. Motion by Director Broadwater, second by Director Taravakia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Item five, approval of the April eighteenth, two thousand thirteen board minutes. Motion by Director Taravakia, second by Director Bane. Questions?
Question. Let me find it here, I'm sorry, I should have just, I was ready to go. There was a motion that Mr. Dorsey voted no on, but he also moved, and that wasn't the case. He wanted to have somebody else move for it, was when we were discussing. When we were talking about.
I tried to fix that.
Yeah, I didn't touch what it was.
I would have fixed that.
Yes, you could. It just, it looked kinda, he moved for it, then he voted no against that, then they made it look right.
Is there a motion to amend to that?
Director Taravakia, make a motion. Just a question. Second by Andy. Item five, oh, I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Item six, Director Bane, board trade-off.
Approved of the April two thousand thirteen general funds cap 2, Title I, Title II, A, Treasurer, Financial, Page 8.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Taravakia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
Yes.
Mr. Rashir.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater. Mr. Delros.
Yes.
Mr. Gannon.
Yes.
And Mrs. Taravakia.
Yes.
Item seven, approval of the following fund you have before you. Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Taravakia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Taravakia?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Asset?
Yes. Solicitor report, Mr. Davis?
I have a report.
Thank you, sir. Education, Director Dorsey, Mr. Harvey, Mr. RSL, we're in the. Consider a motion to approve the attached list of the two thousand thirteen Brownsville area school graduates providing all students with academic financial obligations in management between third and six P.M. Motion by Director Taravakia, second by Director Bane. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Item B, consider a motion to approve the attached letter of agreement between Brownsville area school district and Northwestern Union Services for Pennsylvania for autism school classroom program. A M L S of ninety-one seventy-nine per student per day for slot of all twenty-three days. School will be open Monday, June twenty-fourth to July twenty-fifth, from nine A.M. to two P.M. Motion by Director Taravakia? Second. Second by Director Asset. Questions?
CTI's one.
I have a motion in the second. Any other questions?
She will answer you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Asset?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yeah.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
And Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
And Mrs. Taravakia?
Yes.
Item C, consider a motion to grant permission for the Brownsville area school students to attend Fayette County Technical Institute for Semester About commencing with the start of two thousand thirteen fourteen school term. Motion by Director Broadwater, second by Director Taravakia. Questions?
Just a question. When this study began, it was, ultimate goal was to identify comprehensive at the CTI as being the correct path to go for our children. I think consensus was that was the correct way. However, it's not possible at this time. I was only able to attend CTI meeting last month, when instead of doing comprehensive, it was then running on to do semester about. And hearing that, I had to investigate some about what the semester about entails. And in my conversations with educators, people who were involved with it when it was semester about here before, some teachers, some parents, some students, I just, I was in favor of the comprehensive. But the overwhelming feelings that have come to me in the last few weeks is that this may not be the right way to go at this point. And my feelings are, but I have enough doubt for me not to be able to support this.
Any other comments?
I agree.
I agree. I've been contacted by a lot of constituents and students and parents, and I agree 100%.
I have a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset?
No.
Mr. Bane?
Aye.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
And Mrs. Taravakia?
No.
Personnel, Director Delros.
I move to approve the attached list of professional and non-professional substitutions to be submitted to the state tax service for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year in compliance with the Department of Labor and Industry regulations.
I have a motion by Director Delros, second by Director Taravakia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Item B, I move to accept the attached resignation letters of retirement of the following professional staff members effective the conclusion on the last day of the second semester of two thousand twelve thirteen school year. Ms. Glenda Freeze, kindergarten teacher. Ms. Roxanne Dig, kindergarten teacher.
Thank you. I have a motion by Director Delros, second by Director Taravakia. Questions?
I'd like to thank both of these ladies for all the minutes.
Yes, I also, they're very contagious, and it's lost promise about which one they're doing.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion in the second, all in favor? Aye, opposed.
Item C, I move to accept the attached resignation letter of retirement of following cafeteria employees effective the conclusion on the last day of the second semester of the two thousand twelve thirteen school year. Ms. Delia Mitchell manager, Ms. Linda Miller manager, Ms. Nancy Wincaster.
Second.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Taravakia. Questions?
I'd like to. And we have dedicated employees, and we will miss them. Wish them well in their retirement.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, opposed.
I, I move to accept the attached resignation letter of retirement of Ms. Karen Sarmack Cook, effective October seventh, two thousand thirteen.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Bane. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Ms. Gannon, Ms. Karen, I wish them well in their retirement.
Thank you.
I, I move to hire Amy Keeler as food service director, four-year contract, twelve-month, effective July first, two thousand thirteen through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, subject to the execution of employment agreement prepared by the solicitor with compensation set as follows. Two thousand thirteen, fourteen, forty-six thousand dollars. Fourteen, fifteen, forty-six, nine, twenty. Fifteen, sixteen, forty-seven, eight, fifty-eight. And sixteen, seventeen, forty-eight, eight, fifty-eight.
Motion by Director Delros, second by Director Taravakia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
And Mr. Delros?
Yes.
And Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey? And Mrs. Taravakia?
Yes.
I'll find out to Director Bane.
At direct by the Department of Education, consider a motion to adopt the attached resolution considering, consenting to the use of electronic signatures by Philip J. Sabini, superintendent of federal programs, and Adrian.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Taravakia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Consider a motion to adopt the tentative two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen fiscal budget in the amount of twenty-five million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-four thousand. Estimated revenue was only twenty-three million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars. One point five two two seven seven oh fund balance. Setting the milis for Fayette County is sixteen point five seven, and Washington County is seventy-nine point eight seven. The tentative budget can be reviewed at the Brownsville District Office, Business Office, one on Five Fountain Drive, Roundwood, PA, May seventh, beginning May seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, from nine A.M. to three P.M.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Taravakia. Questions?
Question. I just want to state that I understand the rules where we need to get this out and have it reviewed for thirty days, which obviously we'll vote for. But I want to say right up front, I'm not happy with where it is right now, and I really think we need to get, have a financial meeting between now and this thing goes final, and look at, look in the weeds just a little bit more. I think Mike did a good job. We got it basically last week, and went through the weekend to look through this. And for somebody who's never done it before, I need some more time to look at this. And as a group, I think we need to have a little bit more input. It's one of the major, major things we do, so. I would vote yes today, but I would not vote for its approval in its current state.
I have a special favor. I have a motion, and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Asset?
Yes.
And Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater? Uh, Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
And Mrs. Taravakia?
Yes.
Consider a motion to two thousand eight, June twentieth, two thousand thirteen, to seven P.M. at the Brownsville area high school auditorium, One Fountain Drive, Brownsville, Pennsylvania, as the date, time, and place for the final adoption, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. General final, I agree.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Taravakia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Consider a motion to consent the sale of all the properties listed from the Fayette County Tax Plan Bureau Representative Tax Sale on May seventh, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
I have a motion by Director Bane, second by Director Taravakia. Questions?
Yes, we had asked on Monday, nine first, prices on these properties and things. We didn't get that yet. I called the Tax Plan Bureau, they didn't give me what was owed because it's our business on it. There's a state procedure. There's a state procedure, the state law, it may follow, it's a three-step procedure. In September, they have a, what they call an upset sale, which is the sale that involves the properties for taxes, all taxes. If nothing sells at that point, taxes are stripped of the property. And recently, they have a free and clear sale. What they do then is, any cost accounting occurs on any property, title searches or anything, they will sell that property for their cost. And the property doesn't sell, it goes into a disrepository, and they're listed on a website, I mean bid whatever you want to gain that property. These are properties that after the upset sale, if they're not sold, they, they are the properties. They're no longer the schools in the municipality, they're owned by the county, they, they're getting hired to get those properties back on the tax bill. This will allow these properties to get back on the tax bill. That's what they told me.
I have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I just, and I'm tracking, it makes sense to what they're doing. I just think the public needs to know how much, in some instances, the taxes on these may have been significantly low, and in the grand scheme of things, it wasn't a big deal. But there are some properties in this district that there is significant tax liability, that if those move from that free, from that free and clear, or from that, the upset sale to the free and clear sale, we, as a school district, have given away our right to that, to that significant tax liability. I know we can't do much about it, but I think we should be at least informed about it. That's all my, that's my point.
Motion? Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm going to listen.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Now, letting Director Vane.
Item E, consider a motion to hire Keith Harvey as faculty manager for the 2013-2014 school year with a stipend of $7,200.
Second.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teravecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Teravecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Aye.
And Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item B, consider a motion to hire Scott Rowbuck as athletic director, 2013-2014 school year with a stipend of $63,000.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teravecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Teravecchia?
Yes.
Item C, consider a motion to hire Scott Rowbuck as faculty manager for 2013-2014 school year with a stipend of $1,500.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teravecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Teravecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
No.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item D, consider a motion to hire Rachel Rosak as head varsity cheerleading coach for the 2013-2014 school term with compensation set at $2,400.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teravecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Teravecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Rashir?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
And Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Motion to rounds, Director Assett.
Item A, consider a motion to approve naming the middle school, high school courtyard, the alumni courtyard.
Second.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teravecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Item B, consider a motion to approve request from Brownsville Youth League training permission for use of the high school softball field for drill softball teams 2013 summer fall season. Liability insurance will be responsibility of the Brownsville Youth.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teravecchia. Questions? All in favor? Sorry.
The softball will have here, in here, we've had several issues with other teams taking care of it built. I have no problem going into this, along with our people's textures.
We discussed it Monday night, that our, our maintenance will drag it build, no other other program.
I think you can apply.
Take in line, but we'll take this as a drag, just tearing it up.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed.
Before I do the public comment, I just want to make one comment. I want to direct my comment to you, Mr. Jeffries, if I may. I can't receive information the day of the meeting. I mean, I opened my mail this morning, this is what I got. So at that point, I have to go by what I think is right, unless things change. Now listen, I'm gonna tell you what I'm gonna tell you. This is the information I got today. If I'm wrong, however, I may be wrong, maybe right, I don't know. But you can't send me information the day of the meeting, and maybe you meant to mail it out Monday, but I got it today. And that's, that's all I can tell you about that. And I, I mean, no disrespect, it's just, that's when I got it. So however this turns, this is where I stand with this one. I'm at the public comment, for anyone.
Um, the Fayette County Tech students are hosting a car show, a car show on May 24th from 5:00 p.m., no, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Say that again, I have a car show.
Yeah. VOTech is hosting a car show. Any car show, students at the VOTech are hosting.
We can put that on our website, too.
Okay, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on May 24th. Can you guys make the call? Anyone else to public comment?
Thank you.
Anyone? Last chance. Motion to adjourn. Teravecchia, Director Teravecchia, second by Director Vane, all in favor? Aye. Thanks.